I've been on a workshop all day, man.
That's a long day on Monday.
Yeah. Watching the D.C. What was you doing?
Uh, always, man.
You need to get me out from here.
Uh-oh. Name is Ray.
Hey.
Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Attorney Madison, how are you, sir?
Captain Johnson, uh, you hear?
Good, good.
Captain Johnson, can you hear?
Yeah, I hear that. I hear that. That's good. Everybody waiting on, Captain President, are we?
Uh, uh, there's some, Captain Johnson, sure now.
All right.
Uh, hello, Captain Johnson, over there, man. Okay, just put your hand up. Thank you. Appreciate you, how are things going?
Good, good, how you doing, Charlie?
Uh, I'm feeling off from having five to minutes.
I hear that.
And to all the council ladies on the line, happy post mother day to you.
Thank you.
At the best institution, God made a thing, you know that?
That's, well, I'm not gonna say that.
Hey. Thank you, I'll tell you, it's a little artificial, right with it.
Uh-huh. Just hearing right about that. Does he got eleven participants?
Yep. One minute, if they not go there, I ask Councilwoman Jackson, give us the applications.
All right.
Okay, it's five o'clock, uh, go to record his work session to order. Councilwoman Jackson, if you'd be so kind, give us the application, please.
Mr. President, yes. Yes, we just thank you for the opportunity to give your name a glory and honor. Oh, God, we just thank you for this day, in case these invincible six leaders, these members of the council and other citizens that are joining us, oh, God. We ask that you, in order, after your will, oh, God, anything you like. Oh, God, in everything that he has, he does, even in your sight. And we may be present out there, there's a meaning in the fact that you have chosen and predicted, predicted your family's life. Oh, God, we pray for all those that continue to, I think, exercise hope, nineteen, in our communities, throughout our nation. Oh, God, we ask that your mighty hand protects us, all of our citizens, our families, and our nation, oh, God. We, we're trying our best, oh, God, if you have mercy on us, on this, and if you, if you, if you, oh, this, in Jesus' precious holy and righteous name, oh.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Jackson. Um, no citizens request. Uh, now we to our attorney, Attorney Madison.
Good evening, all. Uh, I received a list of devices probably around, numbering around the chief. Um, basically over the telephone, I, I encourage the councils to continue to, to send me whatever work request you have in writing. I submitted, I took care of submit, we submit the form to all of you, you should have it in your handboxes. But I've got, uh, somebody, actually, in total, the device I have was about fifteen or twenty items, so I had to pare that down. Something more ethical on this, this work session conference call, because twenty items was, is not capable of work, workable, that term. I don't know, um, and I do have, uh, a report that includes the problem. Um, we have, uh, FY twenty eighteen audit, which is more than been complete, but has a problem in terms of management representation letter not being signed.
Oh, yeah.
The management representation letter, uh, is not signed off now by Irish Treasurer, or the mayor, or the, finally, the, uh, planning and developing optimism, uh, the auditors, or, um, Council Communications. And when I say Council Communications, I've talked with them and the mayor now at least three times. Uh, but there's, because the mayor about, and it's just a resolution to the, to the matter, it boils down to, uh, the mayor and Mr. Thompson not wanting to sign off on areas that they don't feel within that control, that only within the control of finance, or it's on the treasurer. They're two direct blended resolutions to, to Thompson, that's what's into it. And that's what the, the mayor and Mr. Thompson, and I have talked with, uh, each other now about after, uh, another letter from the auditor. So we're still pretty much trying to, we, we'll be fixable, let's look to that. What I would like to do, I just looked at the email about an hour ago from the, uh, the auditor, now forward that to the entire council, uh, after this meeting. I believe that I just finished reading it about, about twenty minutes ago. And I didn't want to send anything that I had to make to anybody. Uh, but that's one item, real item, uh, is the status of municipal court. There apparently, uh, is, uh, a request from, not apparently, there is a request, it is from personnel to get their start date and salary level in writing, of, uh, Attorney now, Municipal Judge Brandon Wooton, in writing from the council. I think that's, uh, understandably, they just want to start data at that kind of salary level. So what I said, uh, it's the same as before, but that's, that's not in writing from the council, so I think that's, it was the council. He starts his data at this level, and, uh, first day I can put him into the system. Um, that's based on a follow-up report of Attorney Wooton having already been, um, sworn in. So, uh, we'll talk about that in an executive session if you want to, but not, uh, in any detail, uh, in the open, what I'm getting at. Um, that is a request, I believe, I come, I don't know, and make that call, the council, but I said it, that is a re, a requirement, or I will suggest a reject. Need an executive session, it's further risk.
That's why I, we're looking at having an executive session tomorrow, starting at four o'clock.
I understand, I understand, I just want to point out that personnel actually have been halted until after the executive session, and definitely waiting on two specific items that are now, uh, from data in a, in a salary level. But, but I understand the executive session, I think it's definitely needed, that's my other point. Um, that, there is, uh, there are, there is a letter of resignation received in the mayor's office today of the, uh, Chief Clerk from, uh, the municipal court. Um, I think that might also be another thing to add to the executive session discussion. Or even if she's filed a formal letter to have free set upon a letter of resignation, is, uh, expected immediately. Uh, wanting to, to resign immediately, because we worked two more weeks, so that needs to be discussed, I think, also, an executive session. Uh, but that letter was sent, as far as I can determine to date, uh, to the mayor's office. Um, I've got a, a lease, a lease agreement on the old depot museum that's been drafted, uh, renewing that lease. It apparently has been renewed on a periodic basis, and it's believed in time to renew again. There was also a question asked of me some time ago about, uh, that Spiny, I think her name is, Mr. President, it's Rickery. Uh, there's also a request about an eight hundred and thirty dollars monthly payment that had been going to, uh, the old depot museum from the city, which according to Spiny had not been made since about September of last year. So, uh, she apparently was anxious to get money that had been coming to her on periodic basis renewed. I don't know if they were being held up because of the failure of this lease in existence, but it is, uh, already, and I can get it to, uh, draft also a bit to the council, uh, electronically, uh, this, in my inbox now, in my, uh, my documents, actually, in my email.
Uh, you asking us to take action on this tomorrow?
I, I, I think I, I should wait, because you don't, you already had it, to have a first reading, the night that they actually own it tomorrow. And since I haven't sent it to you, I can send it, uh, uh, probably send it tonight, but then you have to, the way I cannot have it read, then you have to, uh, consider it tomorrow.
Okay. What's that mean?
Councilman Short?
Uh, we need to find out what caused the delay of the funds of the eight hundred dollars a month going through the old depot, why it has a few reasons to this magnitude.
Well, I think what, what, what occurred was, you know, in the budget, we have certain agencies that we, uh, we just, that's already in the budget, that once we pass the budget, they just routinely get what is earmarked for them. Uh, in the past, all them that do, they still contract with that particular agency, and then we move forward with it. But I guess with the, you know, with, uh, Attorney Nunn going, leave, uh, uh-
It's not, I'm kidding.
Uh, sorry, no, that's it.
Mr. President.
Councilman Short?
Mr. President.
Get ready, get ready. Okay, all right, Councilwoman Benson?
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to just go back for, uh, a couple of times, and I, what I want to do is, while I'm, I think it was brought up, I want to incorporate, uh, one of my business items, so we can take care of now, because, um, the attorney, uh, has spoken and is still here. Um, one, just concerning the audit report, the newest one, are you saying there's one different, Mr. Attorney, than the one we have in email already?
Uh, I'm not sure what you have in emails, and from whom, is it from, uh, Andrew Waite at E R I?
Andrew Waite, Andrew Waite at ten twenty-five A.M. now.
I think that's probably one of the same, yes. I'm looking at, you know, I'm looking at a, um, a hard cap, but I don't see the time, because it's cut off on a, a, like, what, they were sent today.
Okay, okay, I'm just making sure it wasn't, uh, another one.
I think, I think it's probably the same email, I would have to ask to see the date and time in my inbox, I'm, I'm suspect, suspecting that it's the same email.
Okay.
Councilwoman, we received that email today?
Yes, at ten twenty-five A.M.
Okay, I have to check, okay.
Yes, um, and, and some of you might want to check your junk mailbox, if you never received anything from Andrew, sometimes junk mail.
Okay, fine, I need to check that, that, all right.
Okay, and then next, uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, just for my clarity, you said, uh, you needed the office or somebody, we, the start date and the amount for, uh, uh, for, uh, Judge Wooton, right?
Yes.
Are, are you, do you need a new start date? The start date was in my motion, in my actual motion. The start date was in my motion, yes, and are you saying we are considering a different amount than already was with the junk?
No, I'm not, I, I did not see the original, uh, written motion, nor, I heard the council report, I did not see the actual document, it's something, record of the, uh, motion in, in passing, I know it's passed, I was listening, it was passed. Uh, I think all that's needed is just that information, is that, you know, minutes to the, to the meeting, just the copy of the minute.
Right, so that, yeah, a copy of the minutes of the meeting will confirm that. I did discuss, uh, at first, that I was gonna say that the start date be in June, and then I moved my motion to stay May fourth.
May fourth?
Uh-huh. It was part of the motion and the minutes, so a copy of the minutes should be sufficient enough.
And, and my last rate of pay, my last rate of pay, I don't know if that was in the motion, was twelve fifty, but that was my last rate of pay, I don't know if that's the same or not, twelve fifty a month.
Yeah, we never, we never messed with the amount, we never messed with the amount, I don't think we would now.
No, I think, the total amount, I think it's about fifteen thousand a year.
I believe that's, I believe that's-
Yes. Yeah, that, I have got to put in the motion, because we've never, we've never messed with the amount, that amount has been set for some times, and that's a matter of the record and minutes, well.
Okay.
Um, also, um, I want to go to municipal court, because that's, that's one of my items, and one of the things that I've been working on, and some of the stuff that you have, uh, uh, talked about. So, some time ago, maybe a few weeks ago, I talked to, uh, Judge Hager, uh, concerning the, 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 the need, uh, for assistance over there in the magistrate office, because we had Miss Nelson working alone by herself, um, so I asked Judge Hager, uh, what is the norm? What does the norm look like when there's a, when there's a perfect magistrate office, how many people are operating? And he said, he told me, well, uh, uh, perfectly, it would be the chief magistrate and three more people, and then he, uh, then he said, well, and also, it could be the chief magistrate and two people, and then you take the salary for the third person, and possibly consider, uh, giving a raise, uh, for the chief magistrate. Uh, following up with that, I also then talked to the magistrate a couple of times. Uh, recently, about three or four days ago, I did text her, I didn't, I know she had tragedy in the family at the time, that I text her, but I was following up on something I had asked her a couple of weeks ago, and I, I simply asked her for, uh, I said, Miss Nelson, give me, uh, give me what it looks like, the cost amount, so that I can, uh, give it to the council, we have not started budget hearings yet, so that the council can consider it. I said, give me two sets of numbers, if you would, one set of numbers being you and three workers in there, and being you and two workers in there, because I wanted two sets of numbers to give to you all. I was high to turn, uh, to hear that Miss Nelson had resigned. Uh, I also pray for the family, uh, there is just some tragedy in her family, so I pray for the family. But I was delighted to know, uh, that Miss Nelson, I was delighted, delighted to know that Miss Nelson, that she would work through two weeks to help transition in, uh, the new, the new and the next person. So I'm glad, uh, that those two weeks, uh, later one offered by her, and, uh, when I took this as just an item off, I asked her to complete the present, and just to, uh, you know, just make sure I'm not misinterpreting, or if she looked up the number, I asked her to look for, look for those numbers, uh, and so you are correct. She did resign, she also offered to remain for two weeks. And so, Miss Nelson, the present, under my report, as I had, as I had to tell you, Miss, Miss Nelson, her, 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 uh, we present your family, she's back involved. Uh, I hate that you have to resign. Um, thirdly, I'm glad that you're offering two weeks, I know two weeks of being offered to help transition someone.
Uh, I'm here, unfortunately, the mayor, uh, sent word to me by Judge Hager, it affected me, but today I had to leave and turn everything in, so I'm not allowed to work over the week. And if they won't do it, I'll just be paid, um, the rest of my time, and this is-
Oh, that's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Um, is, is that a, okay, Mr. Attorney, is that a decision for the mayor or for the chief judge?
That's a good question, uh, I think the chief judge.
I thought that was-
I think, I think the chief judge can answer that, because I can, but the mayor has already-
President?
I don't know, I, I don't know if he's here or not.
But maybe that's something we could talk about during the executive sessions, or, or-
Okay.
Um-
So, uh, okay, so executive sessions are powerful for certain reasons, when you're talking about people getting name and character, et cetera, et cetera. I, I, y'all, y'all know me, I hate to go into executive session when it seems or supposed to be discussed in the public. If there are executive sessions, I see no reason not to go into executive session, but what I'm asking is, the presiding judge presides over the magistrate office, and those kind of things come from the presiding judge. That's what I'm asking, so is the presiding judge on the phone?
He, he was invited, I did turn an email.
Presiding judge, are you on the phone?
I don't think he is, I don't- But he was invited to come, though, at ten.
Okay, so, um, that, going back to Miss Nelson, did you get a chance to even get those numbers together? I know that you had tragedy when I did the following-
Uh, no, ma'am, I didn't, um, everything just happened sort of broken today, so I was unable to do anything, so I had to immediately turn everything in and basically, you know, get my things to get them out, without-
Okay, so, um, Mr. President, would you please invite the presiding judge on tomorrow, since he's not present today, or disown to text him?
I would invite him, uh, on tomorrow, like I did today, I'd definitely invite him on tomorrow.
Okay, so, and, and let me finish with this, because our magistrate, our magistrate office has one person, uh, working in it, and she has now resigned, so we need to look at that picture and see how that looks, okay, y'all here is a boy, she has now resigned. She's also offering to work two weeks to transition a person in, uh, and so, I don't see how a city would turn something like that down for any good reason. And so, um, I, we, we need to think about what that looks like, you are between now and tomorrow, and what that looks like, and, uh, we need to make sure that the executive branch, the legislative branch, and judicial branch are working within the range of their duty concerning this area.
Okay.
I sent, I sent two hours email, uh, from Judge Hager about an hour ago, so if you have opportunity, look at it and read it.
I saw both of them, you, you-
Okay. Okay.
Yes, I re, I read both of them as they came in.
Yes, sir, okay.
Yes, sir, you have the conversation?
Um, and so, the lease on the old depot museum, I'm, I'm sorry, as my phone went in and out on that, but I think I heard Councilman Short say that the eight hundred dollars have been delayed, and was, was that correct? My phone went in and out on that.
Yes, my question was, well, it's, it's not the-
Okay.
And it has a last, a, a tremendous amount of money, I think, what, six or seven months, or-
Counselor?
It was September of last year, I believe, the last, even was season cards in Spiny. But I, I, I'm looking, five months this year, and approximately four months last year, that's total, about half, nine months, that's right, seventy-two hundred, seventy-five hundred.
Yeah. So my-
Hey, my question, Attorney-
So, my, my question, I, I wanted to take on the motivation, and the president hesitated, he was doing the president here, uh, here and doing the president.
Okay, so my, so, sure question is, uh, Mr. Attorney, do you think he called us to wait on that and not speak on it tomorrow?
No, I'm saying, I have to get the, uh, lease agreement, see, I've got a copy over here in my hand, but I can easily forward it to each of you, that kind of normally would be sitting in the conversation, then I could understand it, a copy of it to all of you, I did not get a copy, forward it to everyone, uh, again, I'm holding the copy of the lease, I think the lease agreement was just a conversation, so is my point, uh, I just, I got, I got information about the lease agreement, uh, probably back in, in the middle of March, end of March, somewhere around there, so we're talking about, uh, seven, six to seven months, or that.
Uh, and, and again, finally, really quickly, and we don't have, it's off a lot of time on this matter, people, and if we need to, uh, go into executive session concerning the matter of resignation, the re- uh, resignation, and on Judge Braden Wootson, are those two items that you were speaking of?
Well, uh, I, I wasn't, uh, Trent Wootson for sure, but I wasn't, I wasn't saying that another resignation wasn't, uh, in, in executive session, I, I was saying that in this court, generally, any one of two items, didn't, uh, were on a certain basis for, uh, in executive session, that's what I'm saying.
Your point, and you be, you know, I'm saying this because, uh, we, this is stuff that's supposed to be spoken on in private, like, you know, not matters that can be discussed in public, is that what you're saying?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, okay. So you want to make this, because public is supposed to be practiced practically.
Uh, and the matter, I, I am considering, uh, specific components that need for executive session, I'm nothing to do with what I've already said, well, have not, don't directly relate to what I've already said on, so.
Mr. President? Yes, I got you. Uh, Attorney, uh, I'm, I'm kind of confused why you want to go into executive session if there's not man in character that, that wants to go into executive session.
It's a matter of fact, it's still counseling, right, uh, uh, deal with, uh, uh, the private department, I'm from.
Yeah, but, okay, but, uh, and then, uh, with the bachelor, everybody know what the problem around that, don't say that's a underpaid, it's ridiculous, I mean, we paid those ladies, and, uh, we, we let these, other people get their pay raises, and, and, uh, touch friend with the mayor, and you get double pay raise, but those ladies on the bachelor, they weren't underpaid, it's ridiculous, what no folks get, I'm telling you, it's ridiculous, you know, and they having that much money, and y'all being like, live up everywhere, that is crazy, and then, and with, uh, Trent Wootson, I, I don't know what the, what the problem is, but, uh, I, I, I didn't know what was going on, uh, behind closed doors, somebody don't want him to be the judge, I'm, my, my decision was the way, so, uh, I don't know why we going into executive session, 'cause what, what I said is, 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 is what I'm going to do, and like I said, we need to pay these people, the lady ladies come in, uh, we need a double A salary, 'cause that, what they getting is a joke, and you got people, uh, sitting around here, uh, doing that, and they get paid, but the bachelor, all the lady need to get some money, and I, and I'm just disappointed when I found out how much those ladies make.
All right, thank you, Councilman Reddell.
Uh, Mr. President? Mr. President, this is Attorney Madison.
Go ahead.
There was a request also for a resolution involving, uh, a citizen, by the citizen, um, this Sally Jackson, I, I put out a call Friday, and Sally Jackson saw the attempt to respond to it Friday night, we haven't spoken till this afternoon, about two and a half, three hours ago, uh, so I actually called me back after we spoke about an hour, hour and a half ago, giving me information about her mother, I passed that information on to my secretary to have it, uh, included in a resolution, but the resolution has not been drafted yet, it should be drafted, uh, in the next twenty-four to forty hours, uh, I just got to talk with her, uh, this afternoon, about, uh, some information, this, this uh, this fear, this fear, the, uh, I believe the only child, in fact, this Jackson had a high position in a stroke recently, so she wasn't, uh, she was there, and, and I, I didn't even attempt to talk with her, I thought I would, once I let me talk to anyone, because her hair, she has to stay with me, I'm, I'm, I'm.
So, uh, uh, Mr. Attorney, Ms. Ms. Jackson and Ms. Barbara Fears, her name's Barbara Fears, uh, also in voir de force, what's the resolution concerning?
Uh, I was asking, in, in, in the resolution, a resolution drafted, uh, uh, commemorating her, her long life services, I guess, in the committee of justice.
Okay, okay.
And can you have, can you email that to her, what, attorney, that's maybe something that we can put on the concili agenda, and I think Councilman, uh, Johnson also, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, I think, we had that conversation where something out there a hundred years old that would be willing to prepare, to a goddess or something, with her death.
Yes, that's, that's correct, Mr. President, of what we have to do, we have to do the resolution, in order to be able to, uh, uh, take care of, and I think we said that, that is, uh, outstanding, there's so much to live that long, uh, that we can go ahead and try and, uh, make that happen, uh, for anyone that's over a hundred some years, uh, so if we could, I'll, I'll, we shall put on the concili agenda on tomorrow, but now we also got to figure out how we're going to be able to pay the twenty-some dollars per month, uh, if we're going to come, if we're going to do a line item for that, uh.
I think Council, I think Councilwoman Benjamin did, that's just getting with Miss Wade about a line item that we can pay for it coming out of.
Okay, okay, good, the, the Wade, Miss Wade on line?
I don't, I, no.
I'm here.
Miss Wade?
As long, as long, as long as you're looking to that bottom mark, or sometime coming up, I, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, I understand, I understand, uh, Councilman, uh, Johnson and Councilperson, who I, I, I did reflect, when I did, I thought that, because I was a spirit, I was like a guy, so I, that wasn't what I did. But that, that, that's my report.
All right, ask, ask, did you have anything about the bare receipt we talked about? About which, what, the bare, the bare receipt we talked about for Mr., oh, God, I can't think of his name.
Is that Mr. Harris, Mr. President?
Yes, I think this, I'm here.
Answer. The, this, this is Harry?
Yes.
Well, that, that's what we talked about this, you said you were big lead on, on that item.
Yeah, well, basically, all thing we need to do, Counselor, is go in on Saturday for a, uh, special hearing, and I think we probably can do that at our next council meeting, to allow services to come forth, if we're going to do it basically by, uh, power, we can just go ahead on, uh, they can email the day forward of, of issue, uh, but we just need to set a date on tomorrow for the public hearing.
And I can tell you, I can, I can summarize what I believe the Council was asking for the action, that two items, be brought to the Council, one, involve some lighting, and, and the other, was about the request, they take about sixty of Citywide, to, to, to apply it, is to blow, to be on his own property, instead of six property.
That's it, Attorney, that's it.
Mr. President, yeah, I feel, yeah, on the, uh, on the concili agenda, I see the Council will be asking, uh, Attorney Seagull to draft a letter, asking for Attorney Jones' opinion about the legality of, you, you must, President, being able to sign a contract.
And that?
And, and as of the mayor, I was, I was, I was informed that Counselor, that Attorney, Major Madison was going to be pursuing the same question, so at that, I don't see why we should go through the expense of paying by the seal, when I, when I want Attorney to format the same question, and forward it home to the Attorney General.
Well, it's already been forwarded, uh, to, uh, Attorney General, uh, by Attorney Seagull.
Well, Councilor approved that, Mr. President?
We approved it on our last, uh, concili agenda.
Uh, that's true, Mr. President, uh, what was on this, what was on the concili agenda for tonight, was the resolution authorized an Attorney Seagull to move forward, I don't recall this Council approving that in a revolution, other than what's on the concili agenda for tonight.
We don't have a concili agenda for tonight, it was on the concili agenda last, last council meeting.
The concili agenda that, that Nikki Allison said, uh, had that effort, as, as, as a big device.
It had to be for the last one, 'cause we haven't, we haven't formulated a concili agenda yet.
Well, Mr. President, I beg to differ, with you, this Council has not voted for a resolution, Attorney Seagull to draft an opinion to Attorney Jones, before the last, doing on the last, uh, concili agenda.
Let me get a copy of it, and I'll give you a call back, I'll give you a call, uh, after we get through the work session.
I, I also look at the current concili agenda that's on, on page for tonight, too.
Okay, I will, all right. Anything there, Councilwoman Short?
Uh, no, but, uh, I can't believe this Council done that, and I pray that this Council, if they have done it, that they're totally out of order, why should we spend quick money for a seal, Attorney Seagull to, for a matter that's something that our own Attorney can do, and that, and, and, and that's, and that's the spirit of request, that we start using our Attorney, rather than reaching our Attorney, uh, and high costing money to Attorney Seagull.
Okay.
Look, look, stand there.
All right, Councilman Reddell. Councilman Reddell?
Yeah, uh, I think, really, I want, uh, Attorney Seagull to, to look at this, 'cause you know, uh, we always have issues with City Attorney being one side, they'll give an issue from, uh, a person, and that be one side, and they be giving the side of the mayor, so I think we need our own Attorney to be on the team, instead of the City Attorney, because, uh, in the past, City Attorney, they love to, uh, try to satisfy the mayor, so I'll be satisfied if I hear from someone that don't have any time to marry.
Okay.
But, yeah, listen, I, I'm telling you, yes, sir, yes, sir, uh, if I may, if I may, I beg to differ, I have yesterday here where, uh, Attorney Major Madison has done anything in favor of the mayor or person's house, I think Major Madison has done this, additional risk, risk, and legal responsibility to his counsel, and I take exception to anybody accusing him of that, it's just because you're not getting the answer that you want, you don't want automatic accuse this man of doing something that's not true, and that is not true, Major Madison is doing his job, and I appreciate him for doing that.
Mr. President, Mr. President, Mr. President?
I can, I can, right now, right now, go ahead. I can not call Major Madison's name one time, but it's.
You insinuated, you insinuated that this, 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 this.
I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say, I just said Major Madison, I didn't call his name, but it's you, you, where is he? We only got one Attorney, when you speak of City Attorney, we only got one, we only got one City Attorney, Councilman Reddell, we only got one. I, I know that, but what I'm saying, we need our own people, but, I, I, I don't want to hear from, what, what I can hear from Major Madison, I want to hear from somebody else, where is, that's what I'm saying.
All right, Mr. President, any, any other questions for Attorney Madison?
Yes, yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
No, not for my time.
Pardon?
Not for my time.
Okay, go ahead.
My, my question to Major Madison is, is, uh, my information that I've been waiting on, uh, you have, this be second time that you got it, have you, uh, had the letter, the information drafted up yet?
Which, which letter, Councilwoman Thomas?
Uh, with the residence with the property.
You're talking, uh, Cedar Street, is that it?
Talking about what you requested for, you requested for, to put on your, this form, when you had this, 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 your office.
I got, it says that my secretary asked her to give you the form, I think she said she did, and, uh, she.
No, 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 I'm talking about, our, our secretary has sent this information to you, and I keep asking you, you've been at thirty, for how many months now?
They were, they're officially.
Okay, uh, well, you have got it again from our, our, uh, uh, City Council Secretary for the information that the citizens have asked me to, uh, get done, and you asked to put it on the form, and, uh, it has been, it's, it's that sheet, so I'm, I'm waiting on what is the problem with the letter being drafted up?
That's, I don't, I don't know what the problem is, send that out, Counselor, I haven't seen, and answered one of the names.
Is our secretary, is, is, is secretary on, on, on the phone?
Yes, Mrs. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Ellis, secretary, have you, have you, uh, uh, sent that information that, uh, was requested with the property, uh, for the attorney to draft up the letter?
And he's correct, Councilwoman, um, Thomas, he is, you are, he is talking about the address on Cedar Drive, that is the correct address that we sent in for the property that's a new, so he is, uh, referred to the white address.
But that was actually the, you have, it is the letter, he has it, or remember it somewhere, because that's what we're talking about, on Cedar Drive, this news, this for Ms. Wompler, if you give them any, I'll, then write it on my computer, I'll put it up, but he is correct, that's on Cedar Drive that she left in the file.
And what I was thinking is, what I was thinking is, I didn't have a name and an address, I had to go Cedar Drive, and look at the, the name and, and the address.
Well, this is what I asked it, uh, uh, secretary, she. Yes, ma'am, it may be, it is, what I can do on your form here that I have, a signed, uh, Madison that I found, I will hand walk it down there tomorrow and slide it under your door, so it's spinning on the outside of your box, whatever.
Well, secretary, secretary, yeah, you saw out the door, just, just go in and get it to secretary, I'll go here, I'm, I'm, I've asked her, I'm, I've drafted the letter, I did not have any change, nor that address, to, to, to correct the letter, which I was looking at, I don't have any address, the letter's already been drafted.
So, okay, Ms. Ellis, I have one question. Have you taken this down there before, with this information, with the name, and the address, and the location?
Yes, ma'am, I stuck it in the box, down there, the county letter, I think it was Ms. Wompler, uh, she's from Royal, has her, must own it, and she has the correct address, I think he's just missing a name, is what he's stating, am I correct?
Well, well, actually, I never seen the name on it, or, or, I do recall, you're saying that both of these things, information was put in my, in my box on the door, and I'm not saying it wasn't, I'm just saying, I have not seen a name and address, yet.
I'll recommit it again tomorrow, Councilwoman Thomas, I'll recommit it. No, 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 this is what I'm saying, I keep, keep, keep recommitting the same thing, and you put it in his, his door, with his attorney office outside his door, someone, he should have been received this information, this will be, this, this, he was putting it in the door, and he's not getting it, so what is happening to the information that, uh, you're putting in the door outside the box, who's removing it, and why is he, he's not getting it? I keep asking him the same thing, he keeps talking about Attorney Seagull, but this is something that I have been working on for the last couple of months now, trying to, something that the citizens have asked me to, and which we have a attorney, which we have a secretary, which our secretary keep filling out, putting it in the door, holding this letter with no name and nothing, that is not helping the citizens that requested for this information to be done.
And, Councilwoman Thomas, I agree with everything you just said, and, and this helps us with this, what I'm telling you is, I've already, I've already moved it, which is tomorrow with the name and address, I do not have a name and address.
Uh, can I interject, uh, a time, uh, Madison, is this okay, can I go in and submit, uh, this to you in the evening, right now, uh, this, I'm blurred, okay, I'm gonna recommit this letter to you, okay, okay, and that is, uh, I have, I'll, I'm gonna go ahead and recommit it, uh, recommit, recommit both of them, why isn't, um, submitted, two addresses on Cedar Drive?
Also, Ms. Ellis, can you just, can you see a copy to Councilwoman Thomas, too?
I will, I will.
All right. The other question is for Attorney Madison?
Yeah, Mr. President, I want to go back to that resolution, that resolution, one fourteen dash nineteen twenty, that was, a covenant revolution was formed, wanted to, uh, Attorney Seagull, uh, hipper than thirty, for him to review, I can't recall this Council ever voted to approve that resolution.
I think we approved that resolution in our last council meeting, you know, I'll pull back up my concili agenda, uh, I'll pull it up.
I have it in front of me.
It was on, I have it correct, Ms., Ms. uh.
I was thinking, I was thinking we did send it to President.
What, uh?
Yes, sir, so the concili agenda for Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, and it's item number five, approve revolution, resolution one-one-four dash nineteen twenty, authorizing alternate visitor of the President of City Councils five countries when the mayor refuses to.
And how did I vote on that? You voted?
I voted, it was a unanimous vote from my office, on my notes, let me go back to my notes.
It's technical, I don't vote for this man at all, what the fuck is she?
Give me a check back here. A proof of concili agenda, it was motion by Councilman Johnson, and you seconded Councilman Short's concili agenda in all nine voting yet, and these are my notes that I just jot down for myself.
I don't think I voted for that, I, I don't think I voted for that, uh, Counselor, I know I did.
It, it's recorded.
Quickly, let's get the facts, get the facts.
We will, 'cause I, I thought I was, I was being on the last, uh, concili agenda.
Karen, my, my, I, 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 let's have a conversation more on that, because there's something I think you forgot that I'll remind you about, it was, it was an issue, not in Facebook, ma'am, but I'll just remind you that my, don't, don't you remember, why you wrote it that way?
All right, okay.
I'm just, I'm just trying to trace the money from, from the city, and you got two attorneys, passing Attorney General for the same opinion, one is on, one is, one is on staff, and one is, kind of, this is the way somebody shows up.
I, I, I understand, but it, it just went on, to, to, being right, what's our best draw?
All right, okay, any other questions for Attorney Madison?
Yes, yes, just to follow up on, on clarify the date. Uh, this, 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 this happened.
Okay, this, okay.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, just, just, just told that I know, leaving here, uh, that this is now cleared up, but when I got all the files, you were saying that there was, uh, that the office somehow is waiting on a start date and a mouth for Judge Wootson, I replied to you, that the start date is in, is in my motion, and we never touched the amount, so the office, whoever the office is, is not, is no longer waiting on anything else, right?
As far, as far as I know, that's correct.
Because those are two things you brought up, so that's what I'm.
Yes, 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 that's correct.
Okay, so, so, the minutes of the meeting should be sufficient, that information is in the minutes of the meeting, and you said, uh, the executive session concerns something else?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, uh, that I have a query to that, that this person, this judge being put in our system, and is being paid according to what the Council voted on, and the start date being made for.
I think the issue was whether or not anyone even produced the minutes for personnel, if they don't have the minutes, there's no way around, uh, bringing, Trent Wootson on board, as far as personnel.
Yes, the minutes are easy to get from the court.
Okay, but I had not seen, uh, or not heard the start date, or, and, and a mountain, I couldn't tell anybody that, that's all I was given.
Okay, so, I hope she can, can get those minutes, whoever needs them, so they can go backwards to make for, if, if, if anybody is, uh, swaying with folks' checks, we have a chief of police, that I hope that he has been, uh, retroactively paid, I mean.
Okay, yes, ma'am, okay, any other, any other question from Attorney Madison?
Uh, yeah, and then finally, Attorney Madison, so, we, we, we have a hodgepodge of people with their hands in a hodgepodge of things, um, the presiding judge over there, he is hatin' it, uh, and so, are, are you being the liaison for anybody, is, is the court referring, is the court, when they have a, are they referring to the city of Attorney now, tell me what's going on, 'cause I'm so confused about all these hands, uh, the executive branch, the legislative branch, the judicial branch, it's now a whole hodgepodge, like a soup bowl now, because everybody mixed all in with their head, I know you came from over there, but you're the city of Attorney now.
I don't, I don't understand what your question is.
So, is, is, is the judicial branch now, uh, when they need to make a move, are they, are they, uh, they can advise from you, are they referring things to you, are you referring things to them from the mayor, uh, from the executive branch to the judicial branch, I just think how this is going on?
I, I talked with the mayor, the council, and the judge, at any time, any one of the brief, they sit to raise a legal question, I think they're part of them, but, this, this job is hard, I think.
Say that again, I'm sorry, Mr.
I said, I talked, I said I talked with the mayor, the council, and. I said, I talk, I said I talk with the mayor, the council, and the judicial branch, anytime they ask me a question or thing, I'm concerned, probably. And I also be careful to point out to all of them that I'm neither the mayor, nor am I on the council, nor am I a reporter anymore.
Okay, so you're not handling things for anybody, uh?
I cannot, I cannot, I cannot handle things for anybody.
Okay, but you know, I might just hear it.
I, I can't believe it.
I'm asking you as a source, because I don't like, I don't like that. I don't like people to go out and talk things that they don't know they're talking about. So you are telling me you're not handling anything for anybody?
Other than what my job is as a city attorney, you know, when a legal question is, is that, a legal question.
I got it, I just want to say.
All right, any other questions for Attorney Madison? Any other questions? Okay, to the business items, uh, first, ambulance service. As you are probably aware that our care ambulance would be leaving us, uh, at the end of June. And, uh, I talked with appropriate chairs, attorney, I mean, appropriate chairs, none. And back in June, June twenty eighth, uh, twenty ten, uh, the contract for the ambulance service was switched to the county. So from here on in, E nine one one will be telling the, uh, our next ambulance service through the competitive bid law. But I did inform Judge None that I felt that the council needs to be part of it because the city is not part, part of the county. And it did assure me that, uh, once the bid, uh, process starts, the council would, could also be part of it. Uh, with currently now, they're just taking bids for the ambulance service, and from my understanding, they only have currently two bids so far. All right, are you any questions? I personally have had a book, I know we've been talking about this, uh, for the last several council meetings. And, uh, hopefully that we can just, uh, looking at bringing someone in to talk with the council about, you know, amending our personnel handbook. Uh, I've talked with two individuals who may be interested in doing it, coming in just looking at the, uh, personnel, uh, handbook to see what amendments they can make. Uh, but before we move forward, I ask them to come forward to council if any questions that we, uh, any council members may have, or that time they can ask before we move forward with it. And last but not least, since it's twenty twenty, uh, the radio stations have graciously, uh, allowed us to come into the studios and cut, uh, PSA encouraging the citizens to get out and decal with the sessions. Uh, soon as I get the day and time, I will forward it to the council members, or anyone who would like to go in and cut, cut the service announcement. All right, uh, any questions, any, any questions?
That's right, that's right. Two people that you talked to about the, uh, personnel manual, did they give you a cost, what it will cost the citizen to undertake this, uh, task?
Um, basically, they haven't had an opportunity to look at it, uh, I, I basically forwarded them the cover of our current personnel manual. They're approving, uh, personnel manual now, and hopefully, uh, that's the first question that I asked, uh, how much would this projected project cost us? But they, they're currently, I think, I did it about a week ago, so they currently looking at the, uh, the manual, and hopefully within the next few days that they will get back with the, with the projected cost.
Well, if they come before the council to answer some of the council's concern, uh, will it be able to gather your, your amount of, amount as to what we're looking at for them to?
Yes, sir, that's why I want to get it to them before coming before the council.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I tried to get it for twenty five hundred dollars, but they, uh, what I'm, I'm wronged up in my face. All right, next you have councilwoman Benjamin, uh, business items, budget hearing, update on work orders, I think we have your update on municipal court, uh, twenty twenty municipal legislature, update on check fraud, councilwoman, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, for what goes to my items. Could you tell me the name you said it came down from time of the ambulance service?
What's that now?
The name of the ambulance service, the new.
All, all I know is two of them have already submitted their bids, and I, one of them is North Star, I know, uh, he would be coming before the council on tomorrow upon the citizens' accord.
Okay, and not the other person?
I don't know the, nobody.
Okay, I got it. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So budget hearing, uh, it is May, uh, uh, you know, when we, when we meet, we talk about COVID nineteen related things and those things that are essential to running the city. So, uh, it is time for us, uh, at some point soon, to start, uh, talking about what our budget is going to look like and what our economic injury might look like. We can only project what the injury is going to look like because we just don't know yet, uh, we just, we don't have all our numbers in yet. All right, I did the smart thing of taking my whole timeline to, to where we sit at this chamber, and here we are, not in the chamber. So, uh, Madam Treasurer, on the timeline that you gave us, um, for a budget hearing, what was, um, uh, are we supposed to start doing what? Do you remember? I don't know the whole details, but I would fore it to you a copy of, you know, uh, okay, so, but I think we, we start in June. Okay, in June, okay, so it's May, um, today is May twelve, council people, so I just wanna lay that down, um, that we need to be, um, at least trying to get some kind of numbers of what our injury will look like. Uh, applying for, um, what I'll talk about in the, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, report just briefly. We need to start looking at those numbers, 'cause it won't look the same, uh, it definitely won't look the same because of this pandemic.
If you hold on top of that, uh, that timeline, uh, councilwoman Benjamin, the budget hearing?
Yeah, I can, just a second. All right, um, update on, um, so work order request, um, I have some, I have some in as, as everyone else. Uh, all the, uh, councilmen, the short had a meeting the other day, uh, when I turned in, uh, it hung up on me, so I waited, and I guess I waited too late. It, it then put me on hold, but, uh, councilwoman, it's true that you all have to just talk about work order request and what the process might look like right now.
No, uh, the meeting started precisely at one o'clock, if anybody knew me, I was scheduled to retire, and, uh, about one twenty, one fifteen, one twenty, uh, there were nobody else on the line but me and my committee and, and the president. And, uh, the meeting will be rescheduled, I have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Hendrick, hey, you got, you're in this place, and, and that meeting will be rescheduled.
Okay, and, and is he committing to coming to the meeting, do you know, Captain Short?
Yes, yes, he is, because he, he, uh, he feels his, his crew is deserving of having to do the pay, this has our police, this is our, this is our public works service, this is our, our, our city, other cities, perhaps not all, have included their public works service personnel in their hazard and duty pay benefit. And I think the city itself should afford the same opportunities for the men who work in our, our state. The matter of fact, there was a situation in my ward, the sewage line is stuffed up, and guess what? Uh, it is stuffed up with a big bowl of rock. Uh, and how I know this, because Red Heart got involved in it, and he had this company that had cameras that run sewage line, and, and the, uh, sewage backed up in several residents' homes over on Green Street. And they showed me what was causing the problem. Uh, I may be coming to the council asking for, for emergency money to get that problem eradicated because this is a serious, is a serious, uh, uh, business with people not able to have the sewage in their home. But the, but the thing that really amazed me was how did this big rock get down in our sewage line? Never mind, they said that they will be able to, I think they got a machine that will be able to grind that big bowl of it up at the sand. But there was another problem, they were telling me that will, uh, that they gonna have to address while they're on the kids, so, uh, Mr. Red Heart was supposed to get back with me to let me know exactly what it's going to take to, uh, eradicate that problem, that's how they want it to stick.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm glad that he's, is coming to the meeting, I'm glad he'll be there, and, and tell us about that, 'cause, um, I have work orders that I need filled. I have, I hope it's grass cutting season, I need the grass more, poor cut, uh, and, and the grass finished over there at the walking trail because I have Miss Smith over there very, very afraid of snakes. And then if it's part of this hole over here where we're blocking off the street along the city, I too will be asking the council for emergency money. Um, y'all, y'all should have seen it by now, I'm sure, uh, Judge None told me where the sand in the medium, and then count off, he told me where to count off and then go to the hole. And he, uh, thinking that the city right away may run into, uh, Parkway Chevron, and so hopefully, if, if that is the case, Chevron will help us, uh, pay for it, and we can pay for it together. So I, I need my work order filled, and so that is why I was asking if he, so I'm glad he's gonna be at the meeting, I need to see what the process looks like, since everybody says they're working and they're, uh, out of their work.
Well, they only, they, they only got twelve, maybe fifteen, uh, he gets in that department, laying the pants, his head spread in the soil, so they are stressed out when it comes down to taking care of this city. I, I would, I would ask the man, Mr. Hendrick, even though he's a, even though he's a department head, he don't, disables, uh, uniform, and he gets out, and he cuts man, he do the work that, uh, his man has paid to do, so. I just want to compliment Public Works General Services, I do think we need to include them in the hazard and duty pay. But, uh, should I say, councilman, if we need to hear from this department here, it's just, it's a schedule, a mass cutting, I know it's hard, but it's all over the city, and so, uh, that's what, that's what it's a, uh, uh.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm not true. Who is that if I, if I can, if I can, can you?
Counselor Red Heart? No, no, no.
That's Counselor Short, Counselor Short.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
Go ahead, sir. Where are you supposed to stand, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
No, I, I, I just, you know, I think the, the men's of public work, uh, need to be paid what they was making before they was laid off, you know? Uh, the man that laid those guys off, the ones he brought back, he brought them back, they were delivering, those guys were making more than that when they was working the first time. So let's not talk about a dollar seventy five cent to those guys, let's talk to them what they was making before they got laid off, that's unfair, you know? I, I guarantee you, them guys don't want no dollar seventy five cent, 'cause when the coronavirus thing go with, that dollar seventy five cent going away. But we give them a permanent raise, which they deserve, you know, that's something different, and, and.
Well, during the budget hearing here, during the budget hearing here, Mr. Red, I want you to come and make that appeal. Uh, I can, I, I can tell you this, if, if, if the budget hearing was anything like last year, y'all would count me out, it was a waste of time. And I hope to pray that that's not the case, so what you need to do, Mr. Red, I can, budget hearings, when it comes down to public works services, uh, they're trying to talk about their budget aspect, and you can make that charge, and hopefully the council will be receptive to and feel their favor.
It's in the budget now, it's in the budget now for those guys to be making that money what they was making before. If the man can bring his friends the same way, in the middle of the budget, we can do the same thing with public work, put those men back at the salary what they was making, you know? It just don't make no sense to, to do those men like that, you already don't took the vacation time from, and you took the six day time from, you know? Let them too much money, people lose, then you bring them back at, at middle of the week, that's what I'm saying. And another thing, I, I, I got the quote, you know, uh, at the management house, it, like I said, those ladies should be making more money. The, the chief of management clerk, she'll at least be making thirty two thousand dollars off the bank, thirty two thousand dollars. If you ain't talking about paying her thirty two thousand dollars, you wasting her time. If, if, if the clerk's around now, each clerk should be making at least, uh, twenty four thousand, if they ain't making twenty four thousand, you wasting their time. How you can tell somebody to take a bunch of money up, a thousand dollars, and you gonna pay them junk change? That is crazy. We gotta, Mr. President, we gotta get together and give them those, whoever be managing around now, we gotta pay those ladies, 'cause it's, it's unfair for us to be looking and penetrating those ladies round there. I, I'm, I'm just, I don't know what to say, but we gotta pay those, so, and pay those public works, and stop saying, give them hazard pay. I wanna hear you say, uh, Councilman Short, just give them what they was making before they was laid off, then we talk this off. For the dollar seventy five cent, a dollar seventy five cent on a dollar, uh, seven dollars and twenty five cent, there ain't no one.
Well, let's all have a, let's all have a, have a spare, work our way up. You all know, I'm fighting with, you all know what we're fighting with, let's start somewhere, Counselor Red Heart, let's start with having to, to let them know to truly understand and appreciate them.
Okay, my councilwoman Benjamin, back to you, approve.
Okay, thank you. Again, I, I look forward to, uh, the director being at, uh, that, that next meeting, and it's unfortunate that, um, uh, they have to have to work with that number of people, thirty, however many people out there. It's just unfortunate that all of those public folks were laid off, um.
Four to fifteen, four to fifteen.
Tw- oh, okay, oh, even then, twelve to fifteen people cannot efficiently run a public works department, all of us know that, and it's unfortunate that, and it's unfortunate, they, they just cannot. And it's unfortunate, um, that the, the crew was laid off, and so, hey, let's also try to bring these people back, uh, y'all consider that too as we speak. Well, y'all don't have to consider it, we all been voted on immediately, that's, that's not gonna happen. All right, so my next item is, um, municipal board, I, I got that clear with this authority, that they don't need anything from, from council, concerning Judge Wu, uh, that is, that's a matter of the minute that's in there. It's unfortunate that Miss Courtney Nelson had to resign, but it's fortunately for us, she has offered, uh, two weeks transition to dr- transition a person, and, uh, we are thankful, uh, for that. And hopefully the presiding judge will accept her two weeks, uh, so that she can help transition, 'cause that, that's why he's presiding judge, he provides for the court to make those kinds of decisions, not work, uh, to get to this day. Uh, also, on my next item, so I have a question, so they may or may not look different for the municipal election, and I know the clerk is not on here, 'cause he will be on on tomorrow, so, which means I have to talk about it today in order to talk about it tomorrow. So I wanted to know what is the twenty twenty municipal election, uh, uh, community safety product, uh, process is going to look like, um, at, at the polls, uh, for having to be voting, uh, for people coming in and out of the post office, for her having to be a citizen that she needs in that office. Your election upon us, and May will be gone before you know it, and then it'll be time for those who are running, uh, to go ahead and qualify. And before they qualify, folks need to know what that process is, um, Mr. President, do you know, because, because you're not on the phone, and I know this is not your job, but do you know, uh, the process for the, that, uh, the post office has placed in place or is working on putting in place, starting this? Uh, whatever it is, we need to start, if, if it's ready and finished and complete, we need to start getting this on that, 'cause is, is it gonna look different? The worst thing that we can do is hit people close to election day and say, hey, this is a new process and you can't do this anymore, you can no longer do this, 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 or this. I think we need to phase this up here so people can be ready for it.
Okay, I would talk with the clerk, 'cause I talked with her today about the other item, the business items for yours, uh, holiday district, uh, mentioning to go this afternoon, and she'll, she'll call for it tomorrow, she'll be, be tomorrow, and maybe she can give you the other thing.
Uh, what's, what's, President?
Counselor. Johnson?
This is, this is Red Heart.
Okay, Red Heart.
Hey, uh, and also, uh, during the last, uh, uh, award, uh, alignment award, did I correct? Uh, 'cause, uh, uh, I know my ward and, uh, uh, Ward Four was, was kinda like, uh, was, was, had people in, involved for me, that was in, and the ward, and both in, and the ward, didn't get in my ward. So, uh, can we, in the past, we just take our.
So, uh, can we, and if I had to take our ass in newspaper, put it on the voter registration list in the paper, so, so people can see where they vote at? So, it might be that problem. If, if, uh, either send some cards out to people, letting know where they vote at, but the tool won't be no mix up. If, 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 if they need change and put it in the right place, you got enough time to do it now. But if we wait, uh, we won't have enough time.
Okay. We did that in twenty-eight, twenty-twelve, correct? I think we did that. Okay, all right. Looking with the terrorists. All right, Counselor Morgan.
Okay, um, yeah, we need to know what, it is twenty-ten, it's been ten years since the last I've been Jeremander. Uh, and I'm, I'm not sure if it's time to go to Montgomery to check on that, or, or even if it's gonna happen, uh, because of this whole pandemic thing throwing things off. But this is that year, uh, that things, things, uh, supposed to be, uh, redrawn. I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think we did it in twenty-ten. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's time again. Also, Mr. President, I didn't mean to leave, uh, the COVID update off, but it, but it relates closely to my item number, uh, four. I think it's four, three or four. Um, so, um, there is a, an amount of money now that, uh, that's being fought for. You all want to, uh, senators and, uh, US senators and, uh, US, uh, Congress people, there is an item that's being fought for. And the last two things that they fought for, they got. So, now they're, uh, fighting for an item that, uh, allows cities, citizens to apply for a type of money. Well, to apply, we're not applying, so to speak. So, you don't have to go through the state, you don't have to go through the county. A city itself can say why it needs some money. Uh, the city has to lay out how the money will be used and the money will be sent to the city. You know, uh, there's a red tape before, the state gets it and states it down to county and county gets down to the cities that are under the county. But this is for the, uh, direct funding. So, as we sit and consider, have to be in consideration. So, let's think on those things that we need to be compiling, uh, that we need considering our economic injury. What's that injury looks like? We need to start considering what our injury looks like and have a list ready. So, when they're, they're in second fighting and, and there's the truth, uh, then those money runs out. And so, if we have our list already ready, uh, concerning our injuries and where this money will be paid for, uh, the city of Philly will not be left out and will not be caught sleeping and behind on that. And so, Mr. President, what I suggest, and it's only a suggestion to the council, is that, uh, the council and the mayor's office get together and start compiling, uh, a list of what our injury might look like.
Okay.
Okay, and then finally, uh, my last item is, oh, and just, just to remind everybody, tomorrow at twelve noon, we have our two things with the meeting. I enjoy having y'all on, on the call, uh, collecting information about those people at the meeting. Uh, and then finally, Mr. President, uh, um, my last meeting, it's just at the end of that, that particular week, you're gonna have that information for me concerning your system. Can you email it to me? Do you have it?
A part of it, yes, ma'am. A lot, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is that part of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have, uh, like a timeline when you, you may have it all, so you can send it all at one time, if I?
Uh, hopefully, by Wednesday, it's better than work out by Wednesday.
Okay. Let me know, keep me updated.
I would, I would actually be alright.
Thank you. That, that's my last item.
Thank you, Counselor Morgan. Counselor Morgan, um, obviously, getting your business up, do you have any business rights that you wanna bring up? I know we talked earlier today, you say you're gonna check.
Uh, I want you to, this is what I want to say. I want you to take my, I, uh, cause I, I remember some of my, some citizens that come to my home today. And me as, uh, the representative in this ward, I must do what I need to do to protect the public safety in this area. Cause we've been having some serious issues, uh, robbing, shooting, uh, over here, that I must do this to protect the citizens over here. With the garbage, our people come here, in the morning, we gonna get together and we gonna, um, get this garbage up out this neighborhood. And the citizen over there with that junkyard, um, that's a, that is an unsafe area over there, we have had, that's what people that got shot before. And they're paying, they're paying me, and I am going to do what I need to do for the citizen in Ward 7. So, those items that I have on there, I'm getting together and I'm going forward to do what I have to do to protect these people over here in Ward 7.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Morgan. Uh, who else on the show?
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, I, uh, I'm gonna be scheduling my public works services immediately, immediately, as soon as I can. And I'm hoping that the, uh, dialing number that the, you know, uh, personal call will not be a hindrance. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hopefully pray that my colleagues who have any thoughts and questions for, um, public works services, you know, is available to them, their personal call as well. But, uh, I have a question to Counselor Morgan Benjamin about this, this path of, uh, resources available to cities because of COVID nineteen. I have a question, who, who will be charged with putting the papers for the city or set them together, outlining our needs? And what department will, will this information be forwarded to, for them to consider, uh, resources for the need that they're sending down?
Any questions? Awesome. Thank you. You, you give me questions from, uh, Congresswoman Shaw. So, I, what I do with, uh, Congress, uh, not Counselor Morgan, Congresswoman Sewell is on the phone. I'll ask her so we can be ready. That's those two questions will put us ahead of the game. Um, so, I'll ask her when she turns on tomorrow, uh, what that process should, should look like.
Okay, but from the city perspective, who in the city would be given that responsibility of putting our needs together? And once the department that will be identified by Congresswoman Sewell be shared with you, then once we, uh, get all that checked, that we need, we could know who to say to you. So, who in the city would be charged with this responsibility?
Uh, I would suggest, and it's all suggest, I would suggest we treat it full of lack, um, not necessarily a budget hearing, but you know how we get together in a budget hearing and, uh, people report out, like different departments report out and then the council reports out. Uh, we, we're not gonna know what that injury looks like if we don't have the treasurer there, uh, and the mayor and the council there. Like those three entities right there working smoothly together. I think we can, uh, we can have a good report out and make, uh, Americans tell us what the injury is within the department, uh, the, uh, treasurer, he was raw number. And then, maybe, uh, the council can assign someone to work with, or the mayor assigns from his office to work with, maybe the committee, I don't know, a special ad hoc committee to, uh, to work with, knowing that the mayor, and then, and get that together, and, and get that together so we can submit it.
Okay, uh, once the budgetary, as soon as you're identified and, and said, I would hope and pray that Counselor Morgan will be fully participant. So, we can come out with a reasonable, uh, budget that we can deal and work with.
All right. Get back to the conference room.
All right.
All right.
President Wooten, I have a question.
Counselor Morgan Thomas.
Yes, I have a question. I know we have been talking about our, uh, getting two people to, uh, out into the, into the city about this, uh, garbage. Uh, can you, yes, I, I really, we really need to focus on getting this done, because, uh, this doesn't make any sense that our city is becoming to be, it's a litter, our city become to be littered a lot. And, uh, people just, just not taking this clearly. And, uh, the, the council is just like, well, the mayor spoke instead on their, his high duty. And the electoral features to serve our constituents and with these, these things that we're, what we talking about this garbage? Uh, he say, he just, the public work is not the one getting garbage up, you know. So, we are the ones that in these wards will have to, that we have it bad in our areas, that we be have to go out and get somebody to go in these places and get this, this, this. We need, we need these guys out here.
Counselor Morgan Thomas. I'm glad you're here, your time here, uh, Counselor. Attorney Allison.
Oh, that's the chief?
Attorney Allison.
Uh, yes, sir, I, I was, my name called.
Yes. Were you able to get that contract that we talked about for the code enforcement officer? Uh, two hours a week, uh, sausage business?
No, I, I did not, uh, finish drafting it at this point. I was, I was not ready to sign for tomorrow, but it will go draft, yes. Uh, what I did get information about the, and we talked about this to a limited degree, Mr. President, that the police and the three spies, as you can see, have all ECO certified and can issue citations on most and not everything we're talking about right now.
Yes, that, that's why we voted, you know, that's one gesture that we voted on, up under the notion that they could go out and do code enforcement also. Right, so that, what that's your question is about the contract, no, the contract is not with me. Okay. Now, you have Chief Fuller, don't, Chief Fuller, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, now that it's moved it out and, uh, we have, uh, Oscar Cowell, I have reached out to Captain Brooks, and we're going to have Oscar Cowell to cover it out on that, uh, litter force.
All right, thank you. And also too, uh, I was gonna bring up about the, uh, the animal, uh, vehicle. Would you like to go ahead and talk with the council about, and we should go ahead and put it on the concierge agenda for tomorrow, uh, the total vehicle?
Yeah, uh, two weeks ago, I, I brought it up. We had a, um, animal control vehicle that get, that got tore out in an accident. And we have two animal control officers, but we only have one vehicle. Uh, so, we went and, uh, we did some research. And, uh, Stivers Ford is going to take care of that for us for thirty-four thousand, that the vehicle had the case and everything on it. And they will, uh, pay the most riskable price, and they're on a state vehicle.
And Council members, if you don't object to that, we can just move forward with the concierge agenda of tomorrow for that, uh, three thousand dollars for, uh, shocker, animal control vehicle. Any questions?
And also, yes.
Counselor Morgan Thomas.
Yes, I have a little question at you. Uh, I know the, the project came before, uh, back here, the last council meeting, uh, was talking about the, the two vehicles that we needed for the, uh, fire department. So, I would like to know, have one of those vehicles been involved, is, is it been wrecked or towed out by one of our firefighters? One of our, uh, one of our, uh, what is the commander, uh, is the one that takes the driver white and calls?
Chief, Chief Graham? Chief Graham? We just had a line, Counselor Morgan, Thomas, but we can, uh, follow it up with Chief Graham.
Oh, okay, cause I would like to, I, I, I would like to know that, to find out, uh, if, if so, I think the council is entitled to know, uh, if these vehicles are being involved in, uh, being involved in accident or is it towed out or what happened with it because, uh, some things I think that, uh, we are not being, being straight up about these vehicles. So, that's why my concern was, you know, is have our, have this vehicle been in an accident by one of the, uh, chief of?
Okay, all right. But we'll follow it up with Chief Graham, um, Chief Fuller. Uh, would you want to talk about the general area also?
Well, something else has come, something else has come across my desk, uh, let's stand right on that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counselor, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with this, uh, on the concierge agenda tomorrow for this, uh, animal control vehicle. I've turned it, they only have one. So, that would be the first of the concierge agenda, so we can move forward on tomorrow. That's it. It's counsel on the biggest.
Uh, Mr. President, the chief is on the phone. I, I had contacted chief, both chiefs, uh, public sector chiefs. After, uh, council voting that we could close the street in, um, I was just wanna say thank someone, um, Chief Fuller for, um, going above and beyond and, and helping with this. I also sent to, uh, Mr. Hendrick, just as a heads up, telling him that I'm about to send a work on a request to the mayor's office. Uh, that has since been done, um, giving him heads up so they can start looking for those road closed signs, like they use off of, uh, Summerfield, at the turn top of Summerfield. Um, I, I, I don't have any feedback either way. Uh, I did not get a response either way. Uh, I did not, um, Ms. Ellison, um, not Ms. Ellison, Ms. Ellison, did we, um, hear back yet concerning those work on requests about the, uh, road closed signs? And, uh, no through truck signs over by any means, no?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and so, this is what I, I, I want to know, uh, and maybe the chief knows the answer to this. Can we just go out and get those signs on public works? Cause the chief is, the chief is helping me with this. Uh, uh, Chief, uh, Graham has, uh, said that he can help with this. Uh, can we go get those signs and they start closing the street? Uh, I'm thankful for the help, but we need the signs that are in public works, just like when they had, it was over there, um, at, uh, Freedom Baptist, right, Chief Fuller? Yeah, those kinds of signs that they had over there when they had to close that road, the road closed sign. Uh, I think those signs may have reflectors on them for, uh, night vision, uh, so that people don't run into the sign once the street gets, gets, uh, closed off. And additionally, I need, um, I need, uh, uh, um, no through truck signs over on, um, we have a claim that's coming up. Because, uh, again, it is being said that truck that pulled down wiring, wiring that, one, one thing. And then a pole that, that kind of went on a house. And this is not the first time, this is not, this is, this is also not my first request. I need those no through truck signs that three just made for four wheels, not eighteen. I need those signs too, uh, Mr. President. So, can, did, uh, did you know the answer? Can we just go out and put in work and get these signs that we need? And since they're not gonna put them on, or maybe they're just short at the turn of the wind and cannot put them on?
Can they, Counselor Morgan? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, um, Counselor Morgan Shaw, can you look into that, since you're the chairperson of the, uh, public service, the Counselor Morgan Benjamin? Okay, uh, what is your question, Mr. President? Did you?
Uh, I, I need the, uh, signs that are in public work, the, the, the big ones.
Counselor speaking to the phones, acting hard to hear.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You're looking for road closed signs.
Can you hear me better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Uh, so, the road, the big road, that closed sign with the reflectors on it, I need that for the, uh, the street we just voted to close. And I need those signs for the other times that I also had public works, the, um, no through trucks, uh, for the eighteen wheels that were still coming through. I need those as well. And, and both, uh, this was, if you, if you do do it, it's just a follow-up to the work on request, uh, cause it wasn't really already.
Okay, as you go here and check this, that's a nice.
Okay.
And this turns up while, while I get the phone. I was informed by Mr. Hendricks that the streets signs, uh, uh, the streets signs honoring, uh, the first Black police chief running states back in, back in the day, and, uh, what, what the poles that set up the making the elected, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna be planning a dedication ceremony. And I'm gonna ask the council to please, they're the tennis, it just, it just, it just for, uh, a small gathering, just to go ahead and, uh, put the streets higher and acknowledge the chief, uh, players and runners to this city.
All right. Well, thank you for chatting to the, the call for that, Counselor Morgan Shaw. Thank you so much. All right, that has off our agenda. Are there any other questions at this time?
One more. One more, I need. One more, one more, I need, uh.
Councilwoman.
Yes, this is a serious problem downtown behind the turf center. The bricks are beginning to fall. The, I know that was the building that was, I think was, it was supposed to been towed out from uh, which been taken down during the time of uh planning development, was talking about doing some work down there.
Yes, ma'am.
Today, um they are falling on this, uh I know they got this uh the line up, but that's in uh Michael Johnson's area, uh right just behind the uh the intersection center. Those uh bricks are falling on their own now, and uh I just wanted them to be aware of this, and maybe they might need to put some barriers to make sure that no blocks come through down down in that area.
Okay, alright. Councilman Johnson?
I'm 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 aware of that, with the president.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you. Attorney Malice, if you could, uh Attorney Malice, if you could, email that resolution uh to the council members on this evening, so we can go ahead and put it on concern agenda along with this uh animal control vehicle? If you could, uh email it to us. You said, which which one again?
The resolution for Mr. Jackson. She was asking Ward Four.
Senator Jack?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is it being typed up uh at my office, I can get it to you tomorrow morning? Okay, that's fine.
President, I don't know, I don't know who else, yeah, I don't know who else it was, uh, trying to answer me, but that was somebody else that was, but I was trying to answer, um, so I've been trying to do that in the items, because um it was a Mother's Day day. And so we went to do our annual replenishing of the flowers, and uh Councilman Johnson is terrible. Uh the cemetery is terrible. I thought we had a group, uh, Councilwoman Johnson, and Councilmember Johnson, that had, and I thought we had a group that we also came back to help support financially just a little bit. I thought we had a group that volunteered to help take care of that cemetery, Councilman Johnson.
Uh, hey, uh, Captain, uh, uh, Beckman, you know, right now, I'm pretty sure that I'm grateful for what lived at the mosque that did, came out and do what they gonna do. Uh, but right now, we can't, we can't continue depending on that. We need to get the workers back to work and get another pay that that needs to be paid. Because I'm talking to him this all the time, uh about more payroll upgrades and all. Because we only have like twelve people out in the field, I'm not sure how many in the cemetery. But it's, and you are correct, the cemetery is horrible, and 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 it ain't got much, they gonna get wet. So, you know, I am grateful, we had several people came out on on uh earlier uh and helped with the cemetery, and of course, eventually, they go say, hey, we, you know, the city got news with it too, and and all the.
Right, right. Uh, Councilman Johnson, so we all hold up the meeting. I just wanted to know, wasn't there a group that that dedicated themselves to help it? So my family is one of those groups that came to help this cemetery, so you are right.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what particular group that, you know, I helped several group, but I don't know what particular, I knew we had some.
It is one particular that came for the council, and and I think also, they later came back for like a um I don't know what you call the offerings that that was giving.
I think, yeah, just for that part, the headstone, the thing, the group that was going, restoring the the headstone, and uh, but I'm not sure if they were hitting the grass and all that as well, but I think it was, uh, we finished some some damaged headstones and 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 I figure uh historic people out there going, I I'm not sure, uh, Councilman Beckman, I I recall, but they were, you know, I don't know what's up, and I think that we get some funding, and we donate a few dollars towards them too as well.
Yeah, so, okay, so I'm curious about that, okay. So I'll ask around the board before we leave.
Okay, alright, I heard another voice from our two Councilwoman Benjamin?
Uh, President, this is President, I was just asking.
Okay, I can hear you.
For the Emerson.
Please.
For the Emerson, sorry, sir, we're asking. Asking to move um some some salary base, if you could add, moving from the salary line item or sort of the uh fix that that line item to protect that truck, because we have salary taxes because as you are aware, we are underpaid.
Okay, I know you're gonna take that, too.
Okay, I'll.
Alright, thank you. Alright, let me take this off to the third area one, uh I think it was a very productive meet. And I look forward to seeing each other tomorrow at four o'clock, possibly at eight. But this time, good night, and enjoy the rest of the night. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Alright.